Hi. All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, April 28th, to order. Lots of families, good to see. So at this time, whatever you need to think about, let's have a moment of silence. And with that, Alderman Condon, if you please, if you can, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, everybody stand up, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Technology still in full force. So with that, Mr. Krupp, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll. Dunn?
Here.
Doorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Krupp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Peacock?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Ten?
Present, Your Honor.
Thank you, good city clerk. So again, good evening, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the City Council, I again welcome everyone that's in attendance and anyone who's viewing the meeting over any particular electronic mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. And please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with everybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating, your city government, and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for everyone. So if you have cell phones, especially in the room here, if you'd please put them on silent or turn them off, at least volume, so they didn't interfere with anybody talking. If you want to address the council on any item, please come to the podium right here. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name and address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You also have an opportunity to address the council at public with business. You'll have five minutes. Please be respectful of us, we'll be respectful of you. Thank you. Will on Alderman, please move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for April 14th.
So move?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. JJ, just so you know, if you don't say, I'm just waiting, but if you don't, that's fine. Okay? Ms.?
I said, I, I'm sorry if it didn't go through.
It's probably my ears, so, very good. Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, any update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Next item, will on Alderman, please move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for April 21st.
So move?
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. All right, everyone, we have four proclamations this evening. Arbor Day, Keep Kids Alive Drive 25 Day, International Compost Awareness Day, and Neurofibromosis Awareness Month. So the first one, Arbor Day, Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proclamation reads, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperatures, clean the air, produce light-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable source giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community, and whereas the environmental realities of our time require humans to make a dramatic shift in our relationship to the earth, and whereas the city of Davenport has observed each Arbor Day for 40 consecutive years by planting trees across the city, now therefore we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Davenport, and encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and further promote the well-being of current and future generations. Dated this 28th day, April 2021. I move the proclamation. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I believe Nicole Gleason's here to accept this proclamation.
So thank you all so much for recognizing Arbor Day. As you know, our city arborist, John Vance, is very active in education about trees, working with trees, and we do have the Tree of Hope Ceremony coming up this Friday, as well as many other events this summer, so we encourage citizens to engage with that, sign up for volunteer events, and then also if you do have a tree question or concern, John is very responsive. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. So the next one is Keep Kids Alive Drive 25 Day, May 1st. Alderman Doorman, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. And so this one's special to me because as many of you may know, we've been working with the neighborhood group in order to find a way to reduce speed and noise in our central part of our city along what a lot of people refer to as the loop of Harrison Brady, down to Kimberly and then down to River Drive. And so one of the items that came out of this is this national campaign, Keep Kids Alive Drive 25, and so I'm very happy to see that this is something we're, as a city, now adopting ourselves. So the proclamation reads, whereas Keep Kids Alive Drive 25 is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, working with police and public work departments, schools, businesses, and concerned citizens and communities across the country to decrease speeding in residential neighborhoods. And whereas their mission is to educate people on the serious consequences of driving above the posted residential speed limits, and to encourage everyone to drive at or below the legal speed limit. And whereas Keep Kids Alive Drive 25 heightens public awareness and reminds motorists not to speed largely through neighborhoods, networking, neighborhood networking and the use of temporary yard signs posted by residents in their yard. And whereas Keep Kids Alive Drive 25 is encouraging communities to increase their efforts to inform the public about speeding and the significant dangers speeding poses to children as spring and summer approaches. And whereas the goal of Keep Kids Alive Drive 25 Awareness Campaign is to save the lives of children, pedestrians, and cyclists in our community. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2021, as Keep Kids Alive Drive 25 Day in the city of Davenport, and encourage all citizens to abide by speed limits and encourage the safety and awareness of those around them, dated this, dated this 20th day of April, 2021. I move the proclamation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And today we have the School Board President, Dan Gosa, here to accept it.
Well, first of all, thank you for everything that you guys do. This is an incredibly important initiative, as many of our schools are sitting on a thorough fairs, and those of you who are there early in the morning or late afternoons understand how important the difference between 25 and 35 is in a school zone and the reaction time. And it's particularly with our walk zones that we have. This is an incredible initiative that, that I know our Board President, Dan Gosa, particularly is spearheading in our district, and so we just want to thank you guys for bringing the awareness and attention that this deserves because it is, our student safety is number one. So thank you so much for everything that you're doing in this effort. President Gosa?
I'll echo what Superintendent Schnackloff said. I preach this all the time at every one of our board meetings. I, matter of fact, we have a school zone speed limit sign that sits behind me, so every time when the camera's focused on me, they do see that. I hate nothing more than when I take my kids to school and people zip around you. I love when you guys have the van out there, nabbing them every time. I wish the news would be out there and catch these people and start shaming people into this because one of these days, one of our kids is going to be crossing that street, and they're going to get smoked by a car, and you can't come back from that. That's a terrible, terrible thing. People should realize, you know, it's 25 miles an hour. Kids are quick, especially elementary kids, they can zip out in front of you in no time at all. So again, thank you all for this, and I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, the next one is International Compost Awareness Week. Alderman Lee, please.
Oh, I remember. There, thank you. I'm still learning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Composting is very important, and Davenport has been leading the way for a long time in, in doing composting and making it available to citizens that they can use in their gardens. So this is a very important proclamation to me. Says whereas, the Composting Council Research and Education Foundation declared the first week of May as the annual International Compost Awareness Week, and recognize, whereas recognizing the benefits and values of composting, the city of Davenport demonstrated vision, stewardship, and leadership by constructing and making operational the Davenport compost facility in 1995. And whereas, converting organic waste into a beneficial product known as compost, the city can extend the life of our local landfill and provide access to nutrient-rich, 100% natural soil amendment products to our community. And whereas, composting is a way of returning organic resources to the soil, reducing erosion and non-point source water pollution, conserving water, reducing climate impacts by improving sequestration of carbon in soils, and is a proven method of decreasing erosion and dependence on chemical fertilizers. And whereas, the city of Davenport celebrates the Davenport compost facility, soil conservation stewards, property owners, landscapers, farmers, recyclers, public workers, composters, gardeners, and plant growers everywhere, for their efforts to improve local soils and waterways through the use of compost and compost products. And now therefore, we, Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Compost Awareness Week, and we encourage all citizens, property owners, land management, and maintenance agencies to become familiar with the benefits of using compost products to improve soils, lawns, and gardens of all type, dated this 28th day of April, 2021. I move acceptance of the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
This has been passed. Thank you very much. And also, this is supported now by a resolution of the City Council. And it's going to be accepted by Nicole Gleason.
So Nicole Gleason, again, I'll just say quickly that we are really excited about the anniversary of the compost facility. Generally, we do offer tours and things like that, but with COVID, some of that has been restricted, but we look forward to doing that again soon. We encourage people to drop off their yard waste, come and visit, buy mulch, things like that. We are out of some products right now because of the run on all the products in 2020, but we are actively making more, so thank you so much.
And thank you for all that you and yourself do on environmental support, including this leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next one is Neurofibromosis Awareness Month, May 2021. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas, the Children's Tumor Foundation is observing May 2021 as Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month to educate the public about this rare genetic disorder, and whereas, although over 2 million people around the world are living with NF, and one in every 3,000 births are diagnosed with NF, it is still relatively unknown to the public. NF affects all populations equally, regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender, and whereas, NF causes tumors to grow on nerves throughout the body, and also can affect the development of the brain, cardiovascular system, bones, and skin, and whereas, the disorder can lead to blindness, deafness, bone abnormalities, disfigurement, learning disabilities, disabling pain, and cancer, and whereas, the Children's Tumor Foundation provides patient and family support through its information resources, youth programs, and local chapter activities. Much remains to be done in raising public awareness of NF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, prevention of complications, and support for research. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as World Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens of our community to join with their fellow neighbors in helping to support the efforts of the Children's Tumor Foundation in raising awareness for neurofibromatosis. Dated this 28th day of April, 2021, I move the proclamation.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right. Proclamation has been passed. Here to accept are Mandy Halgan Lockwood and Parker Lockwood.
We just want to thank the city of Davenport for accepting the proclamation. This is Parker. She's nine years old. She was born with neurofibromatosis. She was diagnosed at a super early age, so it's days like this and months like this that are really helpful to raise awareness to this genetic disorder that does not currently have a cure. So thank you very much to the city of Davenport.
Thank you. And now, one of the great honors of the City Council and myself is to welcome some new police officers into the ranks. So happy to meet the chief and do the honors.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and it's my pleasure to represent the Police Department tonight for the purpose of the oath of office and the swearing-in of seven brand-new police officers. Six of our police officers just recently graduated from the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, and one is a, was a certified officer in the state of Iowa. They will soon begin our field training officer program and have a lot of work ahead of them and a lot of learning to do, but all are doing well thus far. So it's my pleasure to start with Police Officer Anthony DeRoi. Anthony was born in Silvis, Illinois, and raised in the Quad City area. He graduated from Moline High School in 2007. Upon graduation, Anthony joined the United States Army. During his time in service, Anthony gained great experience to include multiple deployments to Iraq and Afghanistan. After completing a rewarding tour of duty, he earned an associate's degree as a physical therapist assistant from Blackhawk College. He went on to impact lives by providing rehabilitation to patients in the acute care setting. Anthony and his wife Cynthia have four children, and his spouse Cynthia will be pinning his badge.
So I, state your name.
I, Anthony DeRoi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
You're a police officer.
Thank you.
Police Officer Trevor Crutzfeld. Trevor grew up in Poplarville, Mississippi, and graduated from Poplarville High School in 2009. He moved to Davenport in 2010 to work with his uncle. After that, he worked at PB Liner for five years. Trevor is currently pursuing a degree in business administration. In his free time, he enjoys running, mountain biking, and jiu-jitsu. Trevor was awarded the 300-point club for physical fitness and the Director's Award by the, by the Law Enforcement Academy. His father, Chief Warren Officer Crutzfeld, will be pinning his badge.
I, state your name.
I, Trevor Crutzfeld.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
And now or hereafter required by law.
And now here or after, hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
You're a police officer.
All right, welcome to 2021. Police Officer Mason Pauley. Mason grew up in Coal Valley, Illinois, and graduated from Moline Senior High School in 2015. After high school, he worked for Davie and Asflund. Mason earned a power line diploma from Northwest Iowa Community College in 2018. He then worked for Mid-American Energy Company for two years. Mason is a second-generation police officer, and his spouse Bianca were married in December of 2020. Mason's father, Jim Pauley, will be pinning his badge.
I, state your name.
I, Mason Pauley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
You're a police officer.
Police Officer Raul Alvarado. Raul was born in Silvis, Illinois. He grew up in Davenport and graduated from Assumption High School in 2016. During high school, Raul ran track and played baseball. He attended, he attended Blackhawk College and then attended St. Ambrose University, majoring in English with a minor in criminal justice. He is currently a semester and a half away from completing his Bachelor of Arts degree in English, and he will complete that. Raul is a member of Lulac Local 10, helping advance the economic condition, educational attainment, health, and civil rights of the Hispanic population of the community. His father, Jason Reyes, will be pinning his badge.
I, state your name.
I, Mr. DeRoi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
You're a police officer.
Police Officer Paul Pham. Paul grew up in Davenport and graduated from North High School in 2017. He received an Associate's of Arts degree from Scott Community College. He attended Western Illinois University, and he plans to continue his education to earn a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. During college, Paul worked with Stepping Stones, Parks and Recreation, and AmeriCorps through the city of Davenport prior to achieving his goal of becoming a police officer. Paul is following his father's example as he was an officer in Asia. Paul's hobbies include playing basketball, snowboarding, and mixed martial arts. His father, Quang Pham, will be pinning his badge.
I, state your name.
I, Paul Pham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
And now or hereafter.
And now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
You're a police officer.
Police Officer Benjamin Piotta. Ben was born and raised in Bettendorf, Iowa. He graduated from Pleasant Valley High School in 2018. Since then, Ben has been a student at Iowa State University, majoring in criminal justice with a minor in sociology. In the fall, Ben completed an internship with the Story County Sheriff's Office. He will be graduating with his bachelor's degree in May. In his spare time, Ben enjoys spending time with his family. His mother, Lisa, will be pinning his badge.
I, state your name.
I, Benjamin Piotta.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
You're a police officer.
Police Officer Justin Adams. Justin is from Orland Park, Illinois, and graduated from Carl Sandberg High School in 2014. In 2018, Justin earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Loris College with majors in criminal justice and psychology. He was a red He was a registered behavior technician for one year in Dubuque, Iowa. Justin graduated from the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy in 2019 and served as a patrol deputy with the Washington County Sheriff's Office until April 2021. He is pursuing a master's degree in forensic psychology. Justin's brother, Anthony, will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Mr. Paul Fann.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
For the city of Davenport.
For the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Your police officer.
That's all I got for you, Mayor. So I just wanted to thank you all for your continued support. And to the families here of our new police officers, it's great to see them here because their role in this profession is so critical for keeping them grounded and for support. And for our community members that are here, these are seven new police officers. They'll be in the lobby for a few minutes. Anybody wants to go and say hi, introduce yourself, and meet them, please do. Thank you all for your support.
Another hand. So we'll pause a second. Families, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the council meeting, but I'm guessing you want to be with your loved one there and our new police officer. So we're going to pause the meeting for a second so you guys can exit stage left or right. Thank you all for coming. All right, very good. We'll continue. So the next item is petitions and communications. I have one. I'd like to take a moment. As our good colleague Alderman Peacock has decided to take his expertise and wisdom other places. I've had a thorough process of trying to find some wonderful person to fill in in the interim until November. And a gentleman, who's a professor and chair of marketing at St. Ambrose University, has graciously volunteered his services in that manner. So I'm making a recommendation to the city council to approve, and I'll work with Mr. Warner to do the paperwork, and next council to officially approve Joseph Miller, Ph.D. I'll give you a quick bio. Ben is a resident in Davenport since 2017, moving here after accepting a marketing faculty position at St. Ambrose. He's been around teaching in a lot of places and also serves as a board member of the Northwest Scott County Y. Married for 27 years, two children, one at Central and one who's going to be at North. Native of Detroit and graduating from the University of Detroit Jesuit High School. Tamed his bachelor's in arts from Grand Valley, MBA in marketing from Wayne State, and a Ph.D. in marketing from, in supporting industrial organization from Michigan State. So Mr. Miller, if you'd be gracious enough, just stand up. And if you'd like to say a few comments, I just wanted to take the time now to publicly introduce Mr. Miller as my recommendation to the city council for appointment for the Seventh Ward Alderman. So Mr. Miller, if you'd like to say anything, I'd be happy to have a few comments from you. Thank you very much for volunteering to be in appointment. Yep, you just speak, and it's right there.
I greatly appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much, City Council. My dissertation, when I was a Ph.D. student, was in the area of services. And since I have been a professor for about a decade and a half now, I have always taken a service orientation toward everything. That includes helping students. That includes being in service to whatever organization I'm in, universities, externalities as well. And that's how I see this. I understand the temporary nature of my appointment here. I understand the importance of this. I mean, taking a service orientation is no small task. I'm sure you all know that. And frankly, I'm very honored to be a part of this, and I will do right by you all. Mr. Peacock.
So Mr. Miller, thank you very much, and we look forward, if the council so deems, and we look forward to you working with us. Thank you very much. All right, other council folks? Let's see, okay, here we go. Ms. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations on the recommendation. I'm quite sure you do great things for the Seventh Ward, moreover, the great city of Davenport. Today is one of those days I really didn't want to come. Moreover, I didn't want this day to be today. But as the mayor said, I'm going to do other great things and continue to serve this great region we call the Quad Cities. If I can, I will love to thank some people. And first and foremost, it wouldn't be right. But I want to thank the great residents, the Seventh Ward, because they're the ones who elected me. If without them, I wouldn't be here today. Moreover, I have some friends and families here. If it wasn't for their support, because everybody knows who sit on this council, you know, there are some tough days. Sometimes you stand alone. And if you haven't led or been elected official, some days you stay on that post, you think the world is against you. But there are some days I will just call people, say, "I don't know what the heck is going on." But they say, they always told me, because as a prior infantryman, as long as you stay true north, you look at the star, and you say, "You'll be all right." So I use my values, I try to use my values. Regardless, I try to go against public opinion, whatever the people would say. I trust my values, and that's how I did it. So I want to give to the great residents, Seventh Ward, family and friends that's present. I greatly appreciate you for coming. Corey, I could not tell you, as someone who had an understanding of higher level politics, but city politics is vastly different. And Corey, Speaker, let me know that initially. And I first want to tell you, thank you. There have been once or twice when you're office, and you say, "Hey, let's talk about this," whatever the subject may have been. I don't thank you personally. And as well as your team that you have assembled, I don't think they get credit enough. You talking about the storms, you talking about derision, whatever the case may be. Nicole, I can name everybody that's out there particularly who received my email and said, "Oh, you know, I need to respond." But thank you guys for responding to my emails because there was a resident I was responding to. And I greatly appreciate your quick response to those things as well. Okay, that's got to lay. So I just really tried to do the best I can. And I just hopefully that my friends and colleagues that sit on this council while I'm gone, I want you to take something back with you, and hopefully it will resonate with you. And all I tried to do is provide a different set of lenses because that's what's not being said today. And sometimes in the popular culture and this spin cycle and this funny thing we call the Facebook Twitters and I guess they got the TikToks, all the crazy stuff they have today, the narratives sometimes get misconstrued. And sometimes we forget why we're here. I'm going to say it again. Sometimes we forget why we're here. We're here to serve, not the popular opinion, not how the temperature may sway us. And sometimes that may be an unpopular decision. I stand for you today that sometimes I make unpopular decisions. Sometimes I made popular decisions. But I promise you that I made that decision based on my values and how my father and my mother raised me and how my great Uncle Sam has taught me to follow. And I wish my members on the city council, once I leave, I want them to remember that why are we here? Are we serving the greater Davenport? Or are there a particular reason why we vote in a certain way? And I hope that the mayor and the rest of my colleagues, Godspeed, and I wish them the best. Thank you so very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Peacock. Alderwoman McGinnis. Oops, there we go.
Well, now we're all doing it. Thank you, Your Honor. And Alderman Peacock, best of luck to you. I've enjoyed certainly serving with you. And I hope I'm not overstepping, but I wanted to remind everybody that there will be a very important event on Friday, April 30th, Vandavere Park at 6:00. We will be bearing a time capsule the city of Davenport and the Davenport Community School District. This is the Time Capsule of Hope, and it started last October. It is, yes, and I think Alderman Dunn had something to do with its creation. Is that correct? And so, in any case, you know, it was a very tough year in 2020. Many things happened. And this, you know, being planted in the time capsule or the wishes and hopes for the future. And also, of course, there were, derecho was part of this. There are, the city does have trees available for residents who would like them planted in their boulevards. That's another part of this. So that's taking place on Friday at 6:00 at Vandavere Park, and I hope you can join us for that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to tell Alderman Peacock, I will truly miss you on city council. We've worked together on a lot of things. We've talked things over. We've learned a lot together. And I truly do wish you well in your new directions. And I want to thank you. I also want to thank Nevada Lemke. She is moving on to better jobs, better things. And she has been a rock for me in this year and a half, almost, that I've been on city councils. She's well organized. She's helped me with my meetings. She's helped me keep my ward list of folks who contact me. I just cannot say enough good things about Nevada Lemke, and I truly, truly, truly wish her well with her new job as city administrator in Silvis. The other thing I wanted to say is I sat in on the Transportation Chamber of Commerce discussion that we had the other day. And I am really excited to hear that the Quad Cities International Airport is putting canopies over short-term parking. But most importantly, they're putting distributed solar on those canopies. And they're going to be using that to save money. So I just think that's a wonderful idea. And I hope we can start looking at some of our flat roofs, places like Sterlite. We have huge areas of flat roofs in this city. And I'd like to start encouraging private companies to start using distributed solar and the city to start looking for areas that we can put distributed solar in order to save money and work towards climate adaptation. So I was very excited about that. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, we'll move on to items of approval for, or individual approval of items on the discussion and agenda. We have three. The first one is a first consideration of an ordinance for case REZ 21-01, being the request of Dan Lorenzen on behalf of Rock Church Ministries to rezone Lot 2 of NIM's Acres from S-0-S, open space district, to R1 single-family residential district. Planning and zoning commission recommends denial, so it will take eight votes required for passage. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Seeing none? Will an alderman please?
Yes.
Okay, someone like, okay, there is. Okay, sir, whoever comes up here, please give your name, ward, or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from.
Yeah, I'm from here. I'm Daniel Lorenzen, the pastor of Rock Church. And I just wanted to make sure that we provided tonight all the information that was asked of us last week or during the council meeting. So I wondered if all of you got copies of the architectural renderings and set for our new church? Did you? And had a chance to look at that? I thought that was important. I don't know if we can show that on the screen or not, but thought it'd be nice and good. Is that possible?
I don't think we're prepared for this. We didn't know that was coming.
That's fine. I was just, I was just trying to be very thorough for you guys. I would like to say, last week, I didn't know we were going to make the news last week. And we made the Quad City Times, and it bothered me a little bit because it kind of came across like we were upset with the city or the city council about what we're trying to accomplish here. And that just honestly was not the case at all. We haven't got that far. And I just wanted to make that clear. We are, obviously, we want to get this rezoning done. And we have a huge dream to see this accomplished. I'm a Davenport boy, born and bred, raised here all my life. Love this city, love the people in it. Have proven that by my years of service as a senior pastor and hopefully continue to do that the rest of my life. But this is a big thing for us as far as, because this land was zoned, was zoned for residential just a few years ago. And we didn't know that the zoning had ever changed. So that's kind of a weird deal. I don't know how all that plays out. But I'm, anyway, just here to kind of make this clear, what we want to accomplish. We certainly want to be a blessing to the city. We certainly want to try to cooperate and do things that'll make this work. Again, I told you, I think I told you last time I stood up here that let's just all vote on this, and it'll be over. In my opinion. But I just wondered if you had any questions? For me, I think we requested, someone requested that we have a letter from our bank that approved or pre-approved our financing, if we need financing. I do have that. I don't know who to give it to. Who would I give that to?
You can give it to the clerk, sir, but, yeah, okay.
Anyway. I guess if there are any other questions? I think Joshua, our architect, is.
Okay, sir. If somebody has any questions, you can sit there, and if they want to call you back up.
Okay, okay.
Right, if you're done.
Yep, just want to give.
Roger that. Now, sir, Corey, is this the person we were talking about? Roger that. Okay, because we usually don't let public weigh in on top, but this guy scheduled it ahead of time. So he's, go ahead, sir, you're on.
Hello, this is Joshua Guero, architect of the project at Rock Church. I'm also a member of the body of Rock Church. First of all, I just want to say how appropriate this petition is in light of the recommendation of Mr. Miller offering a service as Seventh Ward Alderman since that directly affects his ward and his mention of his dissertation on servitude and service and how that ties into just what kind of body we are at Rock Church. We're a body that believes in scriptural truth. And Matthew 10 tells us, "But whoever would be great among you must also be your servant; and whoever will be first among you must be a servant of all; for even the son of man came not to be served, but to serve." So I just wanted to give a nod to that. Mr. Peacock, I thank you for your service in the Seventh Ward, Mr. Peacock, I thank you for your service in the seventh ward, and I wish you the best on your future endeavors. So, and just to touch on the item that Pastor Dan provided to the clerk with the proof of financing for the project, it's to directly address some of Alderman Gripp's questions last week, his concern that if we were to have this rezoned, whether or not this project would actually get built. And we also requested that the architectural renderings and also the construction documents be provided to the council so that you can see that this isn't some pie in the sky, pipe dream. This is one step away from being actualized, and that's the rezoning of the property. The documents themselves are one small step away of actually becoming full-fledged construction documents ready for permit. So I just wanted to reassure Alderman Gripp and the rest of the council that this is going to happen as long as we are afforded the rezoning of the property.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? Hearing is seeing none? Okay, we'll move to council. Will an Alderman please move first consideration? And second? Roger that. Okay, any discussion? I see Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, could you please put up the first map? Okay, this is the map we showed last week. I just wanted to put it up again to show that this is four lots down from 46th Street, and it has, and tell me if I'm wrong, staff, but it has no utilities and it has no access at this point. And a question I have is who would be responsible, and this would probably be staff question, I assume, who would be responsible for paying for the installation of utilities and a road should they be able to get agreements to get an easement on that west side?
Laura Berkeley, development and planning administrator. So when there's new development, bringing utilities to that site is the responsibility of the development taking place. So you are correct, right now there is no water or electric to it. There is a sewer line to the south along the creek, but you're also correct, there is no direct street access as well.
And do they have agreements for easements across the other three lots to access that site?
They're actively working on that, but it is not officially in place yet.
Okay, thank you. And could you put up the second map, please, Brian? These are all maps from the background information on the agenda. Laura, do you know the distance on the west side? How long is that lot? Not east to west, but north to south?
Not off the top of my head. I do not.
Could Pastor Lawrence, does it say there? No, I think that's, yeah. Could Pastor Lawrence tell me the distance?
Where?
Up and down, north, south.
So if anybody's going to answer, you need to come to the podium or speak. You need to be here so we can get it recorded.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Laura.
If you know the question, sir, please. If not.
No, I know the question. It's about 160 feet. Also, the easement's been drawn up. SCI, I believe, is the owner of the adjacent property, and they pretty much agreed to give us the easement. So that's pretty much a done deal. So our issue more is now the rezoning. So everything else is kind of falling into place. I'm just trying to, I want to clarify that.
Is all four, you've got three, three lots. Do you have, you're working on agreements for all three?
We're only crossing, we're only crossing Memorial Park's property, so we don't have, there's not another party involved.
Okay. And you said it was 160 feet?
It's right around 160 feet wide, and you can see where the church is going to sit. I was going to mention last week that the bottom acre of this is kind of a floodplain-y. I mean, that's never going to be developed for a lot of different reasons, as far as open space, as far as open space, free open space, whoever wants that, but.
Thank you, sir. So, whatever other question?
I do. I just want to point out, it's very difficult to see on this map, but if you take a close look at the map, there's a 20-foot elevation change between the north boundary and the south boundary, about a 20-foot, over 160 feet. So that's quite a slope for construction. I just wanted to point that out, that that would, I looked at your renderings, and they're all very nice.
Yeah.
But you've got a challenging lot there for a flat parking lot and a building over a 20-foot elevation drop.
It definitely needs some excavating, and they're, the land kind of works for our, with the project because we wanted an upper level, a lower level, and a walkout kind of scenario, so actually feeds into that pretty well.
But there will be quite a bit of excavation.
Sure. No more than the local car dealerships right around us. They did some serious excavating, but yes, there will be.
Okay, thank you.
Anyhow.
And I would just like to read a letter I received from my.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you, yeah. From my constituent about this, and this is also from a pastor, Pastor J.L. Renee Simpson. As a constituent in your ward, I am asking you to please deny the request for Rock Church to build on what is zoned as green space. We live in a city already obsessed with using green lands for building new structures. This happens despite the available brown or already converted lands all over the city. Davenport has a square mileage that in proportion to its population is ridiculous. San Francisco, for example, has a square mileage that's two-thirds of Davenport while having eight times our population. Chicago has nearly four times our square mileage, but its population is 26 times more than ours. Davenport's obsession with destroying nature in this manner must end. As a Christian minister devoted to the sacred earth we have been given to live in harmoniously with the rest of God's creation, I have come to know the evil that has been stowed upon our ecosystems out of the desire for profit and convenience, and my home city of Davenport is one of the biggest forces leading in that process. We destroy lands regularly from medical facilities, the expansion along the 53rd Street corridors, and other businesses while abandoning those lands within our city limits that were previously cultivated for construction. The abuse of our land and natural resources as well as wildlife habitat has got to stop. Whether it be a business, a church, or some other entity, there are plenty of developed lands for them to reuse for these purposes. Again, I am asking you to vote no on this request, and then I urge you to investigate the abuses of our natural settings to inspire you to continue to deny the further destruction that comes by way of request to our council. And just to close, I want to say, however I vote on this, I am not considering that it's a church. I am looking at it in terms of the situation that's there, the site itself, and the potential for inducing further development to the north by providing utilities and an access road. So it could be a coffee shop, it could be a church, it could be a house. That's not what I'm considering in this case at all in how I vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Laura, if I, probably you're the person to answer this question. I had a couple of, what, some clarification for folks perhaps? There was a concern that the zoning was, the change wasn't understood. Would you talk a little bit about when we did the new zoning code, what the city, the steps the city took to notify people, please?
Yes, so there was extensive public outreach, several meetings, advertisements in the paper. I wasn't in this position at that time, but I do know it was an extremely extensive process to notify people of those zoning code updates and changes.
And I believe there were, and I'll ask Administrator Craig Spiegel, but I believe there were, I remember postcards being mailed. We had people coming confused to council. Can you, do you remember how widespread that was?
We had a national consulting firm help lead this project, and several of the council were involved, so, I mean, there was a full-page section, an actual insert taken out in the Times, multiple public meetings, an entire website dedicated to it. It's impossible to know 40,000, notify 40,000 landowners, but the information was definitely out there and available.
Thank you. And another question, Laura, have you received anything from the, you know, this is in the middle of, you know, an area that is set aside, you know, for very modest use and to keep it, to keep it a natural area? Have you had, have you, as the person, the lead sort of staff person, had any communication from any of the other property owners in terms of, to the north, saying that there's any agreements or anything like that?
Not direct communication from them, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. So when I talked with the Quad Cities Times about this last week, one of the questions that, you know, asked was my position, and I really have not taken a position on this yet. And looking at this logistically, this is the first reading of a rezoning, so this process should, would take six weeks to get approved, so we would go through three two-week cycles. But if it doesn't get eight votes tonight, it gets voted down, and then the petitioner can't come back for, for a year. My recommendation to my colleagues on the council would be to continue this conversation and see if we can get some of the questions answered. I know that the petitioner has somewhat of an agreement, but I think there's some names on the documents that need to be changed, but I would say if the, if my colleagues on the council decide that we should consider this for another reading, Laura, I would ask that Alderwoman Lee and myself and our development staff have a meeting with the petitioners to talk through some of the issues and answer the questions and see if we can get to a resolution before we vote on it. And then, of course, if, you know, you don't garner eight votes, then it'll be another year before it can come, come back before council. So this is, Planning and Zoning did recommend denial on this, and we certainly need to respect their opinion and take very strongly into consideration the reasons why they recommended denial. But I think there are some concerns that were raised that maybe with, by working with the petitioner, we can resolve those issues. And then if we can't, we all have to make our decision on whether we think this is the right decision, also noting that if Dr. Miller is brought onto the city council, that this is the ward he'll be representing, and if and when he comes on board, I welcome him into those conversations as well. So you have homework in the meantime. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, in the old days, a church used to be the anchor to a neighborhood, in my neighborhood. I have three churches within four blocks, and they really enhance the neighborhoods. They're anchors. So if a developer came by and he knew there was a church that they could build around, I'm sure they would embrace that. And the church has got a great history, you know. You know, we live in America, you know, probably with government, all too often, they start to over-regulate, and then it kills the dream. So I support it, and if in the future the neighborhood is developed with homes, I'm sure it's going to enhance that environment. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? Very good. Okay. Brian, please call a roll on first consideration. Dunn?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Condon? Lee?
Yes.
Ambrose? Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
And Jobjin?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good. Moves to second consideration. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of the unimproved vacated public rights of way located within the previously vacated subdivision plat known as Island View subdivision, city of Davenport. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none? A motion and a second. Any discussion from Alder folks? Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to ask to table this item until we get some answers back from our staff. We have a few concerns that haven't been quite worked out yet, so I'm going to ask to table that indefinitely until we get the answers.
Okay, seeing no one else for discussion, so there's a motion for a table and a second. Please call the roll, Brian. On the table. Lee?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Jobjin?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Dorman?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good. It's tabled indefinitely until such persons who tabled want to bring it back. All right, the third item, resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of Davenport and the Davenport Community School District concerning the assignment duties and execution of the school resource officer program. Is there any public with comment? If you have comment, again, I know there's a lot, so please come to the podium, the microphone's above you, please give your name, order, address, and if you're not here, we'd love to know where you're from. You'll have five minutes. Thank you very much.
Okay. My name's Kelly Cruz. I'm on the other side of the river, Rock Island's burst. But I've kind of been watching this whole development of the MOU thing. Couple of things. One of them is I know that this has been worked on for a long time, there's a task force and all this kind of stuff, but when I read through it, it still kind of looks rushed through. There's one where it says, you know, or they're talking about what an SRO does, and it says that they're going to be present at, how is it worded? Present at situations that require a police officer. Well, what does that mean? You can't put the job title and then say, oh, it's, oh, their job is to be present at, you know, things that require that, you know. That's not, nothing like that is in my PD, I'll tell you that. It's, you know, there's just not enough, there's not enough fleshing out of what's going to happen, especially if things don't go the way that the city council and the school board want them to go. There's not a get well plan if it turns out that, you know, the survey is like, you know, it comes back and they're like, well, you know, having cops in our school is a trash Especially, you know, this being something that's going to be on the books for 10 years, it seems like there really should be a more well-thought-out, pre-planned and put in writing get well plan, you know, if the surveys don't come back good or something happens. And I'm not seeing that. And, you know, and the people, the parents and whoever, they have a right to know that, you know. The other thing is just, you know, what QCI and others have been saying about cops in schools and what the research says about cops in schools, you know. When I was in my way in here, I met a very nice gentleman, older white man, and he had a black T-shirt on with white lettering on it, really big white lettering, otherwise I wouldn't even have noticed what it said, and it said, "I blow S-word up." Now, he's probably a controlled demolition explosives expert or something, you know, and he's walking down the street and nobody's thinking anything of it. What if I, you know, while I'm dressed like this, were to put that T-shirt on and put a head covering over, covering all my hair? Do you think that I might get a little bit more law enforcement attention than that white man if I had a T-shirt on that said, "I blow S-word up"? And that's, that's really the problem, is that, you know, as much as we try, you know, and we have people that are people of color on police boards, I've seen them, and nobody gets up in the morning and says, "I'm going to discriminate against people today." You know, study after study, you know, shows that that's exactly what happens, that we don't, that there's something in our brain that's not, you know, in our conscious control that decides that stuff for us, and then by the time, you know, by the time that our thinking part of our brain that went to college and went to, you know, our implicit bias training or whatever kicks in, it's already too late. Something bad has already happened, and we see that, you know, we see that in Iowa, you know, nine times more likely, you know, a black girl is to be arrested in school than a white girl, you know, and a disabled student is much more likely to be arrested than a non-disabled student, and a Pacific Islander student is much more likely than a white student to be arrested at school, you know. And I, you know, just like everybody else in this current climate, I've become a lot more aware of my privilege, you know, being a white person, you know. I went to school, the cops have been in the Davenport school since the 80s. I was born in 1975. There were no cops in any of my schools. Not, not one in any of them. And I didn't, I went to school, I went to high school, I went to a boarding school. It wasn't a frou-frou, we're going to give you a school tie that gives you into Yale boarding school, it was, you know. But there's a lot more chance for danger in that situation. When you're stacked into a dorm and there's only one adult on every two floors, all of them. a dorm and there's only one adult on every two floors all night long. Um, I'll wrap, I'll wrap this up in just a second.
Thank you.
There's a lot more danger, you know? You know how many times I saw a cop on that campus in, in the four years that I went there? Zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
Zero. And it's because I'm white. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Hope Luce, and I am from Clinton, Iowa. I lived here over the summer, and I did organize the protests that happened at Vientabier. Um, so I am, before I get started, I do wanna say that I know many people that have been, um, perpetrated into the school-to-prison pipeline, which is directly, um, done by school resource officers. Um, so I do have some things to say regarding the data that we already have. We know that black students make up 20% of the Davenport School District, but they do make up 68% of the arrests. And that 68% of arrests is something that we got, um, from the Davenport Police Department through the Freedom of Information Act. Okay, so, let's see here, that is most obviously disproportionate. That is just crazy. Um, let's see here. And I do believe that this district has been audited for things relating to disproportionality. Why is this massive problem being ignored? Des Moines has recently vowed to remove its resource officers after finding that they target black students over six times more than their white counterparts. They went back and reviewed 10 years of data, as well as student and parent surveys. Neither of those have been done here. The data collected from surveys show students and parents were neutral or positive on resource officers. However, the district's seen, seen the issue and aligned it with today's climate and vowed to remove them. So many students will have a brighter future because of this. Why has this not happened? We know that this is a nationwide problem, and we know that this is a problem here. If you compare Davenport's current data to Des Moines, you can see commonality and trends. That is, again, because this is a nationwide problem. It has always been a nationwide problem. You have a duty to keep your students and constituents safe, and instead you are setting them up for a future of disaster and struggle. I sent this email to you, and there's a ton of data there, um, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see people standing, so I'll just say thank you.
Let me set my timer real quick. My name is Stefan Echols. I am, um, senior pastor here in the Third Ward of Davenport. Um, I also work at Central High School. Um, I actually coach at Smart High School. And I am for, um, approving this, uh, because I really don't have any internet facts for you today. Uh, I actually live in the reality of what happens in our school system. And I do, um, feel that it is very important for us to consider, um, that our officers are an impact of a positive sort and not negative. Um, I'm reminded of, um, of practice this past fall, a young man that I was, you know, transmencial, just got murdered about a month ago, uh, was actually in our field, uh, trying to cause chaos during our practice. And if it wasn't for the officer that was there at that moment, Officer Love Lady, um, I don't know what really would have happened. Uh, we are experiencing different things and guns and all types of things on our, on our properties, and, um, our officers are in support of what we are trying to relay. Um, this is, uh, not a negative thing, and I plead with you, and just even ask you today to just consider, um, passing this and approving this, uh, so guys like me can go home and continue to build our families and not have to worry about, um, you know, us, uh, like the, the shirt that she says someone wants to blow something up. I wanna go home every day, all right? So I wanna be able to be comfortable, have a sound mind, have a peace of mind, uh, where I can have some type of safety, uh, even working every day. And so some of us are in the limelight every day, we're working every day, we are impacting kids every day, um, from all types of cultures and backgrounds. And, um, I want you guys to know that this is a positive thing, again. This is nothing negative. I am in full support, I passed in the area, uh, and we are trying our best to impact. And just like today, we had an incident with our, with one of our officers, and he came into a, it was a positive impact. Tomorrow, we're going to resolve a situation, um, that could have turned from a kid dropping out of school today, and our officer and myself, we're going to handle that in the morning, just happened today, and we are going to make sure he stay in road so he can graduate. That's what this is all about, right? Us and, and our officers and all us working together so we can improve, um, this going forward. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Foley. I live in the Fourth Ward. I have three, three children in the Davenport School District right now, and earlier this year, I was also a substitute teacher for Davenport Schools. So I also have some firsthand experience. Um, our, our district, it's well-known, it has been cited for disproportionality problems, okay? And my experience as a sub kind of backs that up. Um, when I come into a classroom for the first time, which is pretty much every time as a sub, um, the minority students do not trust me. It's very clear, okay? That, to me, is a sign that they've been traumatized by somebody that probably looks like me, okay? And, and I, I experienced that a few times as a sub. Um, another thing I wanted to say is that, um, Des Moines, as somebody pointed out, they just got, they had similar disproportionality problems to Davenport. One step that they took was to remove SROs from schools. So, I do have some internet data for you. Um, there was a study in 2019, um, done, it was, it was covered all the school districts in Texas from 1999 to 2008. It was like two and a half million students, huge sample size. And so it's safe to say that her findings probably apply to the whole country, okay? Such a large sample size. She found, and she controlled for all the variables, such as socioeconomic status, race, and gender, all that. School districts where the police departments accepted grants for SROs, okay, were two-point, they had, their graduation rate was 2.5% lower than other school districts, even after controlling for all those other factors. So two and a half percent lower graduation rate, just by adding SROs to schools, and they had a 4% lower college admission rate. And she also went on to say that for every year of school that a student misses, uh, say they drop out after their junior year, okay? They miss their senior year. That individual, on average, is impacted by 10%, their, their earnings are, are impacted by 10% lower every year for the rest of their life, okay? That's on average. And she estimated that for the time period that she studied in Texas, that amounted to like $105 million lost, okay? We have a huge poverty problem here. This is, this is one small step that Davenport Schools could take. It's not gonna solve all our problems, but removing SROs from schools would be one positive step we could take to fix some of these disproportionality problems. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'll ask everyone in the audience to please refrain, refrain from clapping, no matter what side of the thing you are, just let's, let the people speak, please. Thank you.
Good evening, um, City Council. My name is John Keeler. I live at 3240 Lorton Avenue, Davenport, Iowa. I am a high school history teacher at West High School, and I've been there for 27 years. I stood before this body about a year ago to discuss the same issue of SROs. And at the time when I spoke before to you, and a colleague of mine, Ricky Terrell, was with me, he couldn't make it tonight, the big concern was that SROs were there, but there was no documentation, there was no formality. We really didn't have anything on paper to help our district and the SROs themselves understand just exactly what was before them. And looking over what has been passed by the Davenport Committee School Board, and hopefully will pass tonight, I think that this is something that, hopefully, that you will support. Is it perfect in its initial stage? No, but rarely are things ever perfect. But it does provide the guidelines that we discussed last year. It does have documentation. It does have review and education for SROs. Um, and the reason I have bias on this topic is that with my previous colleagues who've spoken, and yes, it is not a perfect system, I never said it would, but I would say that at West High School, we had Officer Carter, and he's been there for 10 years, and he has made the world of the difference. Because when he walks into the school, he's a colleague, he is almost a staff member, he's part of West High School, and because he has been a constant, he has improved the lives of many that have gone to West. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Ricky Terrell, who spoke with me last time, he had to work tonight, so he couldn't make it. But Officer Carter provides guidance for countless kids, and they look at him as being part of West High School. I personally think that Officer Carter, yes, it's one school, and we've got many schools, and I'm not saying that this is the answer for everywhere, but I think in this community it is, because when you have officers like him that consistently show up, that consistently know the kids, and do everything they can to improve those kids' lives, and yes, there are difficult times, there are trying times. There have been times that, you know, things get heated and pretty intense. Having him there has made it easier for the staff and for the kids, because they knew that they could turn to him and trust him. And I'm hoping that with this program, this, this module, uh, set before this body, that if it's passed, then that we can use this as a tool down the road. Again, if there's mistakes or concerns, the school board can vote on changes, this body can vote on changes. But I personally think that this is the step that we need to go, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am, whoever.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Tatum. I am the juvenile court school liaison at Davenport Central. I have been a liaison for 22 years, and this is my 13th year at Davenport Central. On January 25th, 1999, Iowa Governor Tom Vilsack, an attorney, General Tom Miller, announced a plan to expand the use of school-based juvenile court school liaisons in Iowa to work with at-risk youth and disruptive youth in the middle schools. The liaison's role is to fight delinquency and improve learning for all students, but most importantly, to help prevent at-risk youth from becoming involved in the court system. My job as a juvenile court school liaison is to supervise students who are on probation through the court services and work with individual youth who have been identified as at-risk. My day-to-day job duties include working with students one-on-one, walking students to and from class, coordinating with school officials on students' educational progress, help with attendance issues, make home and community visits to ensure students are in compliance with school and probation programs, and et cetera. Most importantly, what I love about my job is I get to build lasting relationship with students. I never thought in a million years that we would need juvenile court school liaisons and SROs in our schools. As you know, we are living in scary times. I'm not sure about other cities, but here in Davenport, our SRO Officer Sharif does a wonderful job connecting and building relationship with our students, parents, and staff personnel. I am at Central Monday through Friday, and I see the impact Officer Sharif is making with our students in our building. I have collaborated with Officer Sharif on a number of occasions to help run Life Skills Group and meet with students one-on-one. Schools are the best place for juvenile court liaisons like myself, juvenile court officers, and law enforcement to reach at-risk youth. I feel safe having Officer Sharif at Davenport Central. His job is like mine, to keep building relationships and keep youth out of the court system. I'm pleading with you today to please approve the MOOs. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Uh, my name's Michael Cole. Um, I am a retired law enforcement officer of 30 years. I retired in 2009 as a police detective corporal. At one point in time in my career, my last 10 years, I was the district liaison for the Davenport Schools. I'm currently working as security for Central High School. I'm here tonight in support of SRO program, of course, and your consideration of this The two gentlemen that spoke before me talked about relationships. When I started the SRO program, I was one of a few handful of people back in 1978, '79 that was told, hey, you know, you need to go up to the school, you know, we need you to be in the school to kind of, you know, build some partnerships and build some relationships. They didn't give us a roadmap. I understand that in the last month or so, that diligent people have kind of come together and put a roadmap that we need to follow. You know, we can't be concerned, uh, but we taking consideration what's happening in other places, but I think Davenport has taken a, a quantum leap in what they've done so far. I feel that this roadmap will help enhance relationships with kids. Um, my 20, my 30 years, 28 of those years I've been in the school system, I've worked with parents, I was a truancy officer at one point in time, would put me in people's homes to get to know them. I wasn't there necessarily chasing kids to arrest anybody, I was there to build a relationship. SROs are resources. They're not there to arrest kids, they're there as a resource, not just for kids, but they're resources for adults as well in the building. You know, someone may have had a bad situation, they kind of helped them navigate through what to expect. You know, I tell the story in, when I was, uh, in the, um, as an SRO, I used to have a kid that, you know, he was always in doing something, you know? He said, hey, this kid is this, and he's that, he's that, and you know, and I, he was a sophomore, and I, and I followed him through his entire career, and he, you know, he graduated. So I'm sitting at, uh, out to dinner with my wife one day, and I see this kid looking at me across the way, and I, I can't figure out, you know, maybe it's somebody I may have had a police interaction with, but he comes over, he's sitting there with a lady and two kids, and he says, uh, "Are you Officer Cole?" I said, uh, "Yeah," you know, kind of stepped back a little bit. He said, "Well, thank you." I said, "For what?" He said, "You know, you may not remember me, but, you know, every time I was in the hallway and I didn't go to class, you said, 'Get back in class.'" Every time I was out doing something, you said, "Get back in class." You need to, you can have a career, you have a future. He said, "I wanna thank you." This is my wife and my kids. My wife will tell you, she's sitting here tonight, I cried like a baby, because you never know the lives that you touch. I didn't even know his name, I didn't even remember his face, but I touched his life, and that's what SROs do. They touch people's lives more than we think. They give wisdom and they give direction, and most of the time, people follow that direction. One of the other things I did, and I'll be done, is that I always wore a uniform, and there was one or two days of the week that I wore soft clothes. Because when I had the uniform, you know, somebody has this negativity about police, and he didn't want to come over and talk to me, but when I wore those soft clothes, I had kids come over and stand next to me. You know, they wanted to have a conversation. In the lunchroom, I go and sit down, didn't stop conversation, I became part of the conversation. So what I'm saying to you is that it would be a detriment not to approve this, because the lives that we touch, those individuals going to be outstanding citizens. I, I love what I did, I'm 67 years old, I retired in 2009, I should be in Florida sipping on some orange juice or something, but I'm still working, we still got a lot of work to do. Give us the opportunity to do that. I'm sure, I saw the superintendent back here, "Come visit the school." I didn't reach out to the internet to pull some statistics about what's going on somewhere else. I encourage you to come into the school, walk around, go through the process, and they will allow you to see what we see.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Thanks for that.
Next, please.
I'm Kim Brown, um, from KISI Harm Reduction, live in Illinois now, and grew up here in Iowa. My children went to school in Iowa, and so did some of my grandkids. I've been hearing a lot of different things about SROs and law enforcement, and, um, I- a lot of different things about SROs and law enforcement and um I think we need to get down to the heart of the matter and we really have no reason to have law enforcement officers and resource people in schools and funding that for children but there's a reason why I believe that the reason that we have an increase in problems and the buildup of fear and many of the things that my friends have talked about here um is because we don't get to the root cause of problems and the root cause I believe is we should take the funding for SROs and law enforcement that we give for this kind of program and put it into programs for poverty we need to start taking care of what's going on the these things that we see the root cause is not bad kids it's poverty it's me it's folks wandering around unhoused no resources go through a pandemic no resources little UBI help folks out but anyway this poverty is systemic and those are our big problems so I think we should reallocate that funding and start working from the root cause of the problem and try to build stronger schools I did look at a few statistics um from the um CDC I sent them to you Mayor and um VACLU and honestly we don't we don't provide enough counselors social workers psychologists and nurses in our schools if you look the ratio supposed to be don't quote me you have my email I didn't bring anything to read um two hundred and fifty kids to one Iowa's three hundred and fifty-eight or something like that to one right there there's no resources so what's your first move get the SRO and the law enforcement officer involved I believe we can do better I do believe that um black and brown children are targeted I do believe there's great disparities we've already heard that I agree with all of it I believe I agree with Kelly because she was white it's happening it happens let's get to the root of the problem instead of trying to use funds for something that don't work isn't that like the definition of insanity and start back where the root cause is and try to make some positive change thank you.
Thank you. Next please.
Mayor Alderpeople thank you for the opportunity to address you I'm Rabbi Linda Bertenthal Temple Emmanuel one one-one-one-five Mississippi Avenue Davenport you know our nation has a problem of systemic racism that makes it impossible to ensure liberty and justice for all and we see it in the structure of poverty we see it in the higher rate of death from COVID we see it throughout the criminal justice system with disproportionate arrests sentencing and violence by police against people of color especially black people black people and Davenport itself has a problem of systemic racism we see it in our structure of poverty with our racial gap in homeownership more than twice the national rate we see it in our schools with that state intervention necessitated by black students being disproportionately placed in special ed and subjected to punitive discipline measures and we have seen it in our very own SRO program with this gross disparity of arrests of black students you've already heard about twenty percent of the population representing sixty-eight percent of the arrests in recent years that's from our district but it gets worse when you look at the arrests that must be considered discretionary because the disproportionality rises for the offensive interference with official acts eighty-five percent of arrested students were black including a nine-year-old for the developmentally unsurprising behavior of disorderly conduct ninety-one percent of arrested students were black to accept that situation and adopt an MOU without amending it an MOU that does not address and work to overcome the disproportionality directly would be racist and let me clear be clear it's not about whether any of you are racist it's about when we live in a society of profound systemic racism every action that we take or fail to take either sustains even strengthens racism or it undermines and diminishes racism it either has a racist effect or an anti-racist effect and I'm asking you to take the time you need to make sure that this MOU has an anti-racist effect ensure that as future arrests take place they're scrutinized closely not only by city officials but also by the community and if they continue to be disproportionate corrective action be taken ensure that the community has a voice in evaluating SROs and the program ensure that behavioral issues in school remain the responsibility of district personnel and not involve SROs ensure the SROs be trained regularly on implicit bias cultural competence and de-escalation ensure that SROs refrain from all dangerous use from force including use of weapons and chemical spray when interacting with students when George Floyd was murdered the QC Jewish community was horrified and grief-stirken I trust you all were too every Jewish organization and clergy person in the Quad Cities from the most progressive to the most conservative signed onto a statement acknowledging we're failing to live up to our guiding American principle that Al Qudr created equal we said this is a moment that shakes us from complacent assumptions that we're gradually overcoming racism as a nation it's a moment that calls to us and the voice of our Torah that we're not allowed to stand idly by and so we call on our law enforcement and government leaders at every level to do a deep and searching inquiry into how racism is perpetuated sometimes unintentionally within their own systems so I'm standing here today on behalf of the Jewish community say please do a deep and searching inquiry into whether the MOU as it is currently written perpetuates racism I I'm afraid it does I think you must amend the MOU or literally commit a racist act this is an opportunity to bring closer the day when the policies and systems of our nation treat every person equally regardless of the color of their skin not just in theory but in reality so I'm pleading with you use this opportunity wisely thank you.
Thank you. Next please. Anyone else? Okay.
Good evening Mayor and City Council my name is Alexandra Dermody I live in the seventh ward and I realize some people have made comments about not wanting just statistics thrown at them so allow me to tell you how I felt going through the school district I never felt safe with SROs and I'm white I heard how my friends of color felt they felt even more unsafe now the work that's been done with this MOU we all appreciate it um but it's not complete and I think it would be a mistake to pass an MOU approve an MOU in an unfinished state so I ask that you please consider that and vote no until amendments can be made and it is further refined thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi my name is Allison Beck I am a resident of Davenport one oh nine Essex Lane I live in the sixth ward so Mr Jobjen is my uh councilperson and I'm also a member of the Davenport Community School Board and I'm also a parent of Davenport Community Schools children um well one right now and one will be in a few years um I am aware of my privilege I know that when I send my son off to school because he looks like me I don't have to worry the same way that other parents do some other parents do but that's not what this is about tonight we have passed this uh uh SRO agreement after almost a year of work and we're not asking you tonight to abolish a system or to scrap something and start over or whether SROs are even the right answer it's the answer we have right now we already have SROs in our schools the agreement that we have brought before you and that the Davenport Schools have already approved unanimously is a memorandum of understanding by definition that is unfinished one of the things that I asked for a little over a year ago was data on interactions between the school resource officers and our students and there wasn't any and so this agreement is the first step in towards gathering those data we can't make a data-driven decision unless we have data to make that decision with so I'm asking you not to approve something perfect I'm not asking you to approve a finished product I'm asking you to approve the first step towards making this a better relationship between the Davenport Schools our police officers and our community I went to the Department of Justice website and they actually have an MOU checklist that you can look at to determine if the memorandum of understanding that you and your school district is putting together is adequate we checked off all of those bullets is it perfect no nothing is perfect but is this an excellent first step towards making a big difference in the way our community our schools and our police officers work together yes so I'm asking you to approve this incidentally I should also mention this is not a ten-year agreement I don't know where that number came from but it expires on June thirtieth twenty twenty-two that's a little over a year and at any time either entity should we find that this isn't working is welcome to make changes again we've been working on this for a year it is not perfect and it never will be nothing is perfect thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good.
My name is TJ Schneckloth I'm the proud superintendent of Davenport Community School District and I want to echo something that I've seen occur throughout this process as I came on as the superintendent full-time superintendent in March um I have watched this develop and what I'm witnessing is a courageous conversation about a very difficult topic in our society right now and I've watched our our two entities engage in conversations I've watched our entities engage in community members that want to step to the plate and here are some of the things that I've seen change what does the tenure thing mean we've changed the language we changed the language with disciplining aside the classroom that's not the purpose I've watched the I've watched these two entities take take consideration from the community because it is not perfect and there are there's never going to be one-hundred percent agreement and to quote our 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 school board and our board president is that we have to find the common ground I'm very proud of the data that is going to be collected that will be our data the interaction data that both sides decided that they would like so I'm I'm very proud of both the the city council men and women that have engaged in this very courageous conversation to help move forward a program that is currently inside of our district one of the things that has been brought to light throughout this process is what does the student voice say and I want I want to stand before you and let you know that we are committed to engaging youth leadership teams um we have recently started our training and for those that are in our schools it's an absolutely powerful thing we are committed to surveying our students about about this exact topic and from there a plan on engaging our students in that conversation um I also would like to say that you know Chief Sikorsky and Lieutenant Smith are two incredible people committed to the right work and that's one that's one reason why I can stand and speak with conviction I hear our community speak and I feel the burden of those things disproportionality is at the heart of our is at the heart of the work that we are doing we're committed to to improving in that in that area in the Davenport Community School District we're working hard with our with our partners from the Department of Ed and this is one area that we will be keeping track of and we will be um monitoring as we move forward but I I just want to um applaud the the start of a conversation because many people would want to sweep that conversation under the rug and I know that we're on different spots for that but the conversations must continue regardless of whatever the issues are in order for us to improve so thank you very much and 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 please consider this MOU as a working agreement thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pausing. Okay.
Superintendent totally stole my speech so I'm a little speechless right now um again we already have.
So Mr Gosha for the record, right.
My name is Dan Gosha I live in the eighth ward I am the president of the Davenport School District I figured I'd been here enough and you all knew that but uh I just wanted again for the record we already have this agreement for the SROs this is just for the MOU to determine the parameters of that our school board voted unanimously Monday night I know Director Hayes was home ill but she is in full support of that I had talked to her and she is on the uh task force with us so um again it's the start of something that you know it's a good deal that we're working together on this stuff um very happy working with all of you and again uh Officer Cole was actually the SRO in my school when I went there way back when um and it is he did always say that make sure you get to class when he'd see you in the hallway um that that's a true statement I can attest that I heard that happen to other people not myself but uh again um you know it's a good program I fully support our SROs in the building I think they're doing good things and building relationships when tragic events happen they're our first people in the buildings you know they got their ear to the ground they know what's going on and they're the first people to get out there and get after it so again uh we voted on this unanimously I hope you all can do that as well um and again thanks for working with us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here it, okay.
How you doing my name is Willie Shorter and I'm hearing you guys talk about policemen's in school well the policeman.
Mr Shorter your address please just for the record.
Five oh one West Third Street.
Thank you sir.
Well for one the police do not have a relationship with our kids in our community so therefore when they have problems in our community they still have to go to school so when they having problems on the street and they don't have anyone that they could talk to or have any other resources their problems go to the school now just like the other day there was a kid that played basketball it was four kids in a car chasing him with a gun he came where I was and a couple other fellas and we had to call his mother to get him home and he was coming from Central you know what I'm saying and I asked him why they did not call the police he did not want me to call the police he said he don't like but he's running for his life so if y'all want to fix this problem you got to start with our community first and if you don't start with our kids first our young kids as they get older we done lost two two young kids in our in our community and our community is mad about it and I don't see the police out there fellowshiping with our community because they don't have that trust so therefore that's why I brought my bullhorn today because every time I see them in my neighborhood I'm gonna call I'm gonna make sure that everybody know they there because the simple fact is our community is being untouched you guys not talking about the community you talking about businesses that's why our kids are dying and that's why it take OGs like us to be out there with them and make sure that they safe now if you guys want people citizens walking around with guns to protect our kids then that's what we'll do.
Sir if you'd stay on the SRO.
No listen man you give us our five minutes but you always always interrupt me though.
You'll have public comment on anything else ever.
This is a public comment you always interrupt me though.
On this issue please stay on the issue please.
Yeah I'm done.
Thank you very much.
You always interrupt me when I'm.
Thank you very much Mr Shorter you can come back and public comment.
Oh I definitely would.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mr. Shorter.
There's a motion in a second to approve is there any discussion I see couple Alderman Peacock.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Let's get one thing straight we are here to discuss the MOU we are here to discuss the MOU we're not here to discuss school resource officers that ship has sailed everybody know how I feel about that when we first discussed that so once again we stay on task we're discussing the MOU what we have with the school district so as I listen to comments and I will reiterate what I said last week and but I will give comment now everybody would love to talk about the SROs what impact they have or a particular officer in a particular school is doing a great job that's not we are not here for that once again that ship has sailed what's before us today is and I will love to reiterate. What's before us today is, and I will love to reiterate what Brad by had just talked about, and I will talk about the MOU directly. I said last week, why are we in such a rush? I will say that again. Why are we in such a rush? Just this cycle, just today, two things were postponed, because they wanted further discussion. Why can't this have further discussion? I asked last week to the city administrator, what is the timetable? She said, there's no timetable. So why are we in such a rush? And once again, I talk about the process. It seems as though we have this way of doing one thing one way. And then all of a sudden, when it comes to doing something that has a lot of angst, if you will, a lot of ritual, a lot of public comment, we seem to just let it, hmm, let it go by. The question is why? Why are we in such a rush to get this thing passed? I will reiterate, just today, two things were taken. My colleague said, well, we need further discussion. We will work with the partitions. Well, I'm asking my brothers and sisters, sit on this council, to continue work with the director, to continue to work with the school board members, because this thing is not perfect. At the end of the day, there's one person that I truly, or two individuals I care about, is the children of the Davenport schools. Not the officer. Once again, that ship has sailed. Not the administration. That ship has sailed. But who is going to speak up for the children? And that MOU does not specify that. Somebody said last week, well, this is just a roadmap. I don't need a roadmap. A roadmap tells me nothing. A roadmap does not give direction to the police officers in those schools. Someone says, not perfect. Hmm. Well, if I'm not mistaken, and coming from the task force, they had ample time to do so. My question, what were they doing during this time? My question, what are we doing during this time to get it perfect? Because once again, it is those children that we must consider. Their safety, we must consider. And no one can speak up for them. And why not? I haven't heard the children's voice yet in this whole target thing. And it's fear of race, because you even think about that. Everybody know how passionate I am when it comes to kids. Well, we building relationships. We're building PR. That's not their job. Their job is not PR. Their job is not mentorship. I've asked my colleagues that sit on this council to do their job. Let's not rush this thing. Let's continue to have discussion. Asking the person who's going to hopefully represent me, was it the 7th Ward? Take heed to what I just said, because the council just set the precedent to putting things on discussion and keep them discussion. If things seems not to be quite accurate, or there's things need to be further discussed, my colleagues have set that precedent. Because they set that precedent, we should follow that precedent. Let's continue to put on discussion, send that back to the task force. We not in a rush? Let's send it back to the school board. We not in a rush. At the end of the day, we are here for the kids and that relationship. With a healthy school board, it's a healthy environment, a healthy community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jocelyn.
Sorry. Missed you. Next. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been one that has been a little questioning the process, but as I've thought about it more, you know, I think as we are now coming to an understanding, you know, the process is fair. You know, the school board has passed it. They said they agree to it, and now it's before us. We've had opportunity to review and to come to an understanding. One of my initial struggles was that, you know, I was actually looking for a Policies and Procedures manual, right? What are the details, right? But we weren't tasked for that. The task force wasn't tasked for that. It was to come up with an understanding, so we can start to collect data. And so I am supportive of this MOU this evening. I agree with many. I don't believe this is a perfect document, but I believe the understanding is that as data is collected, we will continue to refine. And so I believe we should pass this, approve this tonight, not just acknowledge the receipt of, if Dale's still in the crowd. And my request, as, you know, the program that is being developed moves forward, is that, you know, we continue to have, you know, just clear, you know, the clear dispersment of data that's out there. You know, one of the things I would look and I would ask the school board or the school district to add in the data that it's collecting is documentation of when officers are referred to act. You know, if a school teacher, you know, requests the presence of an officer, if a council requests the presence of an officer, make sure that's documented, so we can get into the details. I think the school district should communicate as they develops it, you know, what is the criteria of success and maybe unsuccessful program? I think that's where people have a lot of angst, is that there's no clear-cut, hey, this is passed, this is fail. You know, we look at the schools, and kids get a grade if they do well on a, you know, however they do on a test, and they know whether they pass or fail. You know, so hopefully, as the program continues to be developed, and the process continues to move forward, and the policies and procedures are more clearly defined, then we can communicate that to the public as well, so that, you know, we can make sure that we are doing the right thing for the children in our schools. We need to have strong schools in the city of Davenport, because that's why people live here. People can live wherever they want to and go to work. They can commute. But if we want the city of Davenport to be successful, we need to have very strong schools where people are confident that their children are going to be safe, confident their children are getting a grade of education, so they can be proper members of society. And so I hope we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grepp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to first start off by thanking Superintendent Schneckloth and School Board Directors Beck and Gosa, not only for being here and speaking up, but for your efforts over the last year in drafting this MOU in a very collaborative way with the city of Davenport and the people who needed to be involved. I think we are leading the way in the Quad Cities as far as public education and SROs. And, you know, to be clear, this point was made earlier, but the SROs are going to be in the schools whether we approve this MOU tonight or not. We've made that decision. They'll just be in the schools without an MOU. And I think this MOU is a good start. It gives us structure. It provides expectations. It gives us the opportunity to gather data and then to make decisions based on that data later on. Again, we're leading the way in the Quad Cities. The other schools, save for Rock Island, have SROs. They do not have MOUs. They're not doing the things that, they're not taking the steps that we're taking to ensure that our SROs are being effective. Okay? Now, I'm a Davenport Central grad, okay, a product of Davenport Public Schools. I coached at Central High School for 11 years. I've got four children in the Davenport School District, okay? I have vested interest. I have skin in the game, and I am a big believer in having skin in the game, okay? And I'm going to be very clear. I choose to live in Davenport. I choose to send my children to Davenport Public Schools. Those are choices, okay? And a lot of people make choices on where they want to send their kids to school. The health of Davenport Community School District depends on keeping children in the district and attracting other children to the district, okay? The per pupil funding mechanism that the state funds education pays per pupil that you have in your district, okay? That's how your budget comes. We need to keep kids in our district. Now, as I mentioned, Bettendorf, Pleasant Valley, North Scott, the other schools that people are looking at, okay, they are not going to have the conversation of taking SROs out of their schools. They're not going to. And if we do, that puts us at a competitive disadvantage. It continues to see the number of pupils in the Davenport Community School District go down, and that is what hurts the Davenport Community School District. We need as many kids choosing Davenport schools as possible, and the SRO program is a popular program among parents, and it keeps us competitive with the other schools in the Quad Cities. All right? Now, to be even more competitive, let's get to the point of what we can do better to attract students to Davenport Community Schools, to get people to choose Davenport schools instead of choosing the suburban schools and choosing private schools. And I think one thing that we can do to be more competitive is we can lead the way with mental health counselors and counselors in general, and working with our partners at the state, with the county, and Genesis, getting people on board to get more counselors in high schools and junior high schools, lead the way in that effort. And that is another competitive advantage that we'll have for people to choose Davenport schools. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wanted to start with saying thank you, especially to the school board representatives. Having served on that board, I feel pretty comfortable saying it's one of the most thankless jobs out there. You spend a lot of time in meetings going over very specific details of things like MOUs to try to make the best policy impact on the 15,000 students that you're charged with taking care of. I want to, I think it was Director Beck that said something about this being only a first step, and I think that that's a really important recognition, that this, we know that we've got to catch up. We know we've got to do better, and we're trying to. And then there was also community members that came and shared their experiences, and I personally at least find that extremely valuable, to get a firsthand experience of what your eyes are seeing. I do have some pretty strong concerns that there are not enough checks and balances to address the disparity. It's happening here. It's happening nationwide. I do think this will hopefully be a first step, but I'm still, I have a lot of concerns that we're not really getting to the root of implicit biases, that everybody thinks everybody else has an implicit bias, whereas I know I have implicit biases. I work on it every day. I try to counter whatever, you know, cultural standards might influence the way that I treat people. And even with the best of intentions, even if everyone has the best of intentions, this is a system. There is a systemic problem, and hopefully, the data that we're collecting can get us to fix that. I do think that we should add some administrative regulations. I know that the timetable is because of the school board passing as well, but I do think that administrative regulations would add some clarity and be beneficial. But I do still have some concerns that this is just a fundamentally flawed thing, that we are having officers in schools to do psychology, which they are not trained in. And that's just, that's not fair to our officers. That's not fair to anyone, to set them up for something that they haven't been trained for. But I'm genuinely hoping to be proven wrong. I was a little more optimistic that we could serve as kind of like a pilot program, a little more on the skeptical side after kind of some of the things that have been going on, but I do genuinely hope that I'm wrong and that SROs can be, have a positive impact on our minority students, not just the students overall, but specifically on our minority students, because that is where the disparity is and where the harm is being caused. So I guess I'll just end with saying that we absolutely need to keep an eye on this program as a council and as a board, and I'm seeing nodding, so that's a good step, I guess. But really also then just having the political will to take action if there is disparity. And that's on the elected representatives here and there, too, to have the political will to say, if the data comes back, and this is not helping especially our minority students, to be willing to make serious and significant changes. So that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Last week, I made extensive comments about the MOU and the time I have spent from the beginning of this process to the joint session. I appreciate Clause 7, which took it from a 10-year MOU to a one-year with multiple evaluations, was added at my recommendation at the joint session. And I appreciate Superintendent Schneckloth. I saw you took the note. You mentioned it, and I appreciate that being in there. It's a very critical clause, and it's very important for me to be able to consider this in a positive light. I also appreciate Lieutenant Smith in answering my questions, and I felt you did a good job answering them, because that provided some clarity to some of the vagaries that I found in the MOU itself. Last week, I asked for a very simple and important change, a substantive change of just several words, so that it was a correction that was needed. And interestingly, I was dismayed at the level of pushback I received from the dais with my request. Couldn't do it, didn't have time, the school boards already passed it, words don't matter, don't worry about it, we're under control, the task force, you know? And I, no. I was planning on spending Thursday talking to all my colleagues to try to get the change from the discipline in the classroom to anywhere on school grounds. I thought that was an absolutely critical change, a substantive change that needed to be made. And I was very dismayed at the amount of what I felt like bullying for the second time this month that I received from the dais. I was very pleased to see that the statements that were made from the dais were wrong and that there wasn't time to fix something. We'd have to go back to the beginning, which obviously was not true, because by Thursday afternoon, we had an updated and amended MOU for our consideration with that change in it. And it also worked with Alderwoman McGinnis's concern with that same sentence, that it have its own clause within Section 6. So both of those were addressed, and the school board had time to vote on it, and so we have an amended MOU before us. As elected alderwomen and aldermen, I have to say something. In a strong council, weak mayor form of government, it's our duty and authority to conduct our due diligence regarding matters brought before the city council, to respectfully, thoughtfully, and transparently deliberate those matters and make informed and, to the best of our ability, wise decisions. Our duties and responsibilities do not include a mindless rubber stamp approval of any matters brought before us by any entity, government body, or person. There are lots of MOUs, and the checklist brought up on the Department of Justice, that's out there, and I'm glad that you use that as the task force worked. And I just want to reinforce, Alderman Peacock last week said that I had asked multiple times for status updates on the task force. And when I asked, I was rebuffed with generalities about having many productive meetings that included NACP and LULAC. But that does not provide the answers to status of what was actually happening. If you were not on the task force, the information was not provided in the public meetings on where you were and what you were working with, who you met with, and it wasn't even clear who was on the task force. So I really appreciate those changes that have been made, both after the special session and after our request last week. So I also, another thing that was stated from the dais last week was that words really don't matter. You know, this has already passed the school board, and we don't, you know, my little changes were not that important. However, words do matter, especially in a memorandum of agreement or understanding that is signed and dated by multiple entities with legal authority and responsibility to implement the agreement and evaluate the effectiveness over time. So we do have a responsibility, as city council, to consider every word in such an MOU-- MOU and make sure that it meets our needs. Yeah, I recognize this is a first start, and I'd much rather have SROs in the school with an MOU than SROs in the school without one. It's absolutely critical that we have some kind of understanding on what their jobs are and that it be consistent across the schools that they're in. With these comments, like I said, I appreciate the changes, especially the addition of clause seven, which does provide the opportunity to review this every year, and I expect that as city council, that we would have the opportunity to review the data and have enough time to do our due diligence with it, to reach out and seek more information, and so that we can do our job in this strong council, weak mayor type of government. I continue to stand behind my concerns voiced at the committee of the whole meeting last week. I support what Alderman Dickman just said. I completely agree with that. I want to make sure that the question about effectiveness is a very important, like you said, Alderman Jobchin, and you know that I've asked that question before of other departments and situations. How are we going to know what the objectives are? Are we collecting the data to show whether we're in, in accordance with those objectives? And is this an effective program for addressing the school disproportionality concerns that they're dealing with? I don't want this program in any way to further contribute to the disproportionality concerns that this school district is having to address because of state audits. At this point, I will vote for this MOU, because again, I would much rather have an SRO program with an MOU, even if it's flawed, than without one. I will be requesting the follow-up information for clause seven coming up in February and a full accounting of the effectiveness of the SR program, and again, the evidence that this program is not contributing in any way to the disproportionality of effects to the student populations, the children that are being policed within the schools. In conclusion, I truly hope that from now moving forward, discussions and statement from the dais are less emotional and coercive, and more deliberate, discerning, thoughtful, transparent, and respectful to all members of the council and the publics watching and contributing to our discussions and actions. When we bring up suggestions that we think need to be made, we need to be listened to as a council, and in this case, I appreciate someone jumping on it as quickly after I was told it would not happen. So, thank you again, and that's.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've heard, you know, this was a year to break all records, I think, in, in this country. It's a year that we probably needed to have, and I can't help but see the, this MOU and the discussions that we've had and the concerns that people have shown as part of coming out of this very important year in the life of our country. The hard questions that we've had to ask ourselves as we look in the mirror, it's been a challenge, I know, for our, our, our school system and, and what they're dealing with with the state, and I, I want to thank, I want to thank everybody that's been involved in this process, either as a participant or as providing feedback. I do think that the task force has worked on a document that I also see as a work in progress. I am very glad that we will have data that we can look at and that will allow us to see, hopefully, if things are working, if they're not working in a school, or if something's happening really well. I think it takes courage for a city and a school system to do this, to try to be more transparent than perhaps government often is and other governments around us are not. And I know that we all do this because we care about the children who are growing up in our community. They are our future, and I recognize that as well. I think all of my colleagues have, you know, have been well spoken tonight. I will be very interested also in looking at what comes of this. I appreciate also the changes that were made after our meeting last week, so, but let's remember that this takes a lot of courage on all of our parts. It's not done, it won't ever be done. We're working, you know, we're dealing with issues that, you know, have plagued our country its entire life, and so, but this is a great step, and let's, let's try to take that step together. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, I'm at a few comments, so I appreciate everyone in this room and everywhere else offering their comments, suggestions, and concerns. Someone said to me recently, did you ever think, and it was someone who's been involved for a long time, that there would be a regulated SRO program anywhere? And Davenport is stepping up and leading because of the public and the community voicing their concerns. Is everything that every single person in every dot and every T crossed? Probably not. But because we think it's important to listen to the community, this task force, this MOU, this working relationship, this collaboration was set forth months ago, and the amount of work and collaboration and efforts from people that are on the school board, the staff of the city of Davenport, the police department, the community, the NAACP, the LULAC, the city council, where else is that collaboration happening but here? And through the efforts of your voices, we've put together a document in collaboration with many folks, talking to, listening to many types of folks, and will continue. Somebody said this is a working document. That's the way I see it. It's a continuous process. It's a continuous evaluation. It's a continuous learning piece. Someone said to my left, rather have an SRO program with an MOU, but this is more than an MOU. This is a document, a collaboration, an understanding of people coming together from many parts of the community in many walks of life to say, we think it's important, and we're gonna continue to make this program a good program. We have heard from a lot of different people tonight and others, from their perspectives of history and being in the schools for a long time, to being new, to being brought in recently, to being on the task force, to being in a lot of places, and that's what this is, the collaboration, the working together, the understanding, again, not every I and every T's crossed, but it's certainly a pretty good document, it's pretty good process. This process has been better than most processes that's ever happened. Almost a year of people coming together and switching, changing, adjusting, moving, gathering information from all people's perspective, many people's perspectives, to include administrators, teachers, parents, students, for people who say students are, they certainly were involved. I assume you know I'm in a classroom every single day for the last 18 years, talking to students. For people who say the children are the most important, there's people sitting in this room that work with children every single day, and that's their lifeblood to help with that. So I ask the council to please support this, please approve this, and we'll continue to work on this, just like we continue to work on many things. To Superintendent Schnickloth, to Chairman or President Gosa, to Director Beck, thank you for coming. For the people that work every day with our youth, Pastor, retired Officer Cole, Rodney Tatum, who I've come to know very well, is a, is a leader in working with youth, thank you for coming. To the individuals from their perspectives, thank you for coming. For the council, thank you for giving your advice and guidance and thoughts. Thank you, because this is what is important, everybody coming and working together. Where else is this happening? No disrespect to anybody, but where else is this happening? Where the amount of different folks in this room, the amount of different folks anywhere else can come together and talk and work and collaborate? But you guys said we need to do that, and we are, and we will, and we'll continue to do that. Because, yes, children are the most important, and the people that are dealing with children every day understand that, and will continue to work to make this better. So, I ask everybody to please approve it, and with that, Brian, please call the roll. Peacock?
No.
Lee?
What was that? Am I saying Jesus Christ?
Hmm? I don't know. Okay.
General, please, Mr. Peacock, please, you gave your vote.
I don't know.
You gave your vote, thank you very much.
I don't, I don't understand what just happened.
Brian, continue. Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. Resolution is adopted. Next item is a motion for approval of all items on the Casenogen. Motion and a second, we'll call Brian, please. For the consent.
I had asked Alderwoman McGinnis to pull something off consent to amend.
Okay, hold on, stop. So Alderwoman McGinnis, are you asking for something?
Could you, I'm sorry. Could you, I'm sorry. Could you remind me? I can't.
Okay, I'll pause, you go think. I see Alderman Peacock, do you have something on consent? No, okay.
It was a straight closure.
Okay, so we're gonna move on here. Please call the roll for consent. McGinnis?
Yes.
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Peacock?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. Consent approved. The next item is that are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none. Is there any public with business, meaning any other item besides what was on the agenda? Please come to the microphone, please give your name, ward, or address. If you're not here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Something I talked about yesterday with the riverfront improvement commission, and perhaps I've shown you this.
Mr. Handel, I apologize to you. Anyone who's wanting to have another conversation, if you would please step all the hallway and have the conversation so we can continue our business. I apologize, Mr. Handel, carry on.
Bill Handel, fourth ward, also Nashville, Tennessee. This is an lithograph from probably a, a directory of all the counties in Iowa, probably of 19, 1880, I think. It shows our city as it existed at that time, and at the riverfront meeting yesterday, because they were talking about River Drive and the, the boundary of their, the extent of their work, and I was looking at this map, and River Drive, everything south of River Drive, including River Drive, did not exist at this time, did not exist at this time. We had our front street, all the way down pretty much to Credit Island, everything south of River Drive did not exist. That was all done on the behest of the city at some point. All that river was, was filled in, and when we have our, we're talking about our flood control issues in the city of Davenport, we kind of in a, in a way made our own problems to some extent by taking that portion of the river away from it. So, the other thing I wanted to talk about was something that I think is lacking in these meetings, and we have our moment of silence, and we have our pledge of allegiance. Some years ago, Dick Gage was our, our poet laureate from the city, and he said something, you know, made an original portrait that he'd written and talked about it, and very lighting on. Perhaps what we should do is occasionally have something of an lighting nature that's we, just like an appetizer before we get started. So tonight, I guess I would, it could offer Maya Angelou's statement of, when someone tells you who they are, when someone tells you who they are, believe them, and they can tell you that, you know, in their words, and they can also tell you that in what they do. And, and any work of art has got ambiguity, and so I'd like, like you to think about that as you go home tonight. But the brief thing that I want to talk about is, city, what it tells you about is when you're approaching from River Drive, it's a very kind of a scruffy look from River Drive. You got to say, it's not something we would want people to look at. To the left, you'll see our, our city cemetery, and I spent a couple of minutes, about, about an hour this morning, and I commend everybody to spend an hour at our old city cemetery. The city's done a good job, and why was it placed there in 1843, seven years after the city was founded? Because it was the most beautiful site in the city, because there was no River Drive, there wasn't a two-lane road, there wasn't even a pony path. That was the edge of the river. There was Maple Island, this large island, there was Willow Island, and it was chosen because it was the most beautiful place in all the city, because that's where you could, if you had four children, there was a good chance that one of those children would die before they reached adulthood. So the family on, on Sunday afternoons, nothing else to do if they're one day off, they'd pack a dinner, they'd go down to the cemetery after church. The kids would play in the, in the cemetery, gravestones, hide and seek, and the folks would think about their lost kid. They'd look toward these islands, Maple Island, the closest one, where the land is more elevated, Willow Island farther back with the willow trees, it's lower, it had more of those willow trees. And 1900, or a little beforehand, the city decided, it really didn't care that much about its, its ancestors, what was more important was, was industry. So they decided to build the Crescent Bridge, fill in all this area, and give our riverfront all the way to the, to the east end of the city, to the railroad. So I, Davenport has told us what it is, and I think we have a chance to perhaps resurrect it, and I'd like to see some re-establishment of a, of an accessway, a green easement, all the way from that great city cemetery, all the way to the river. I think David Chipperfield, one of the first things he did was the cemetery for Venice, Italy, and they have a special, Rick Steves, they had a special Venetian funeral where they have gondolas going down. Perhaps we can have boats going down from Main Street Landing down to this area. Perhaps we need people all over the world who'd like to be buried at the Mississippi River in our cemetery.
Mr. Handel, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Kenzer?
Sorry, I have a bad knee.
No time to get up here. No time.
My name is Brentson Kenzer. I live at 304 East Lottie Street in Bluegrass, and I'm also proud to serve on the Scott County Board of Supervisors, and I'm here tonight. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for your service and what you do, and, but I'm here just to recognize my good friend, Mr. Peacock, and tell him thank you. Thank you for what you've done, thank you for serving this community, thank you for your service in the military, and I'm very, very proud to call you my friend, and I wish you the best of luck in your endeavors, and certainly you've served this community very well, so, I, I thought I just, it was important for me to say that to you, but thank you all for what you do. This is a fine place to live in the city of Davenport and Scott County, so thank you so much for.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any pose?
Aye.
Very good. We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Everyone, have a good evening and a good weekend.